Ready?
Yep.
Follow work stress your order 5:15. Time you want to take over?
I'm waiting to see who's coming down the hallway, but um yeah, so we started out in um hey Dana, just for a little bit of history, I provided a lot of information with me too and we had a chance to look it over, but um our water rate raising history is sparse. I think we started in the early 2000s. I feel like it was 2002, 2003, and then didn't raise them again until 2008. And then took hiatus until 2014 when we got the Ogra grant to do the water plant improvements and raise them. Then we did a three-phase approach, so I think we did one and then six months later did a second raise. And then I think it was a year past that there was a third raise or third increase. And that was some of that too. We also took out a bond with that Ogra grant and that bond document has a minimum reserve amount that we're supposed to keep with our our funds. And we are now below that by about $40,000. I did also receive a letter of last year from SRF saying, hey, we're a little concerned about you guys. What's your plan? At that point, I think we were on the second or third version of the rate study. We had one done in 21, decided not to raise rates at that time because we were just coming out of COVID. Things were very unstable as far as income and people were recovering, so we wanted to give them a little bit of time. I think we've done the, we've updated the rate study one or two more times until this one. And with this rate study, I think it's very evident that we need to move. We need to move probably a little quicker than we want to, but at the same time, it's a good time of year to do so because we have people in town, a lot of times who've done it with the winter. People are upset because we do it through the winter when they're not here and they have no say, so um there's that, but um basically the the recommendation that they are coming back to us is about a $40. For an average user, it would be about a $40 increase. That's for 4,000 gallon, which
That's not even our average.
Yeah.
$40 a month?
$40 a month for, but that's counting.
That was 27.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah. But we're also, we've we've eroded that funds even more, so we have to catch up, not only catch up, but then start building funds because we have some big projects coming up. Not so much with the water plants, but one of the things that we do have coming is sort of like service replacement, which is
Unfunded.
Unfunded mandate. Thanks, and we can thank Flint, Michigan for this.
There is. I did some research on one. There is a grant out there that most municipalities don't know of. And I'll I'll take it up. I did some research about a year ago for one of my colleagues at BS and I'll send it to you too.
I heard this.
I don't know all the qualifications or we're too small to qualify, but it's a federal or well, I don't think it was like a national through one of the federal agencies, but by now it could have been cut for all I know.
That's what I'm worried about and that's what we're picking up on state. It's it's difficult to rely on state assistance right now or even federal assistance in terms of planning. And I think
Absolutely.
The increase that you're seeing from the last study is that Bob and Karen both sat down and factored in.
Yeah.
What we're going to be looking at, because I think a lot of communities, when we look at the comparative chart to other communities, I would suggest that other communities have not done that yet, and so their rates are going to reflect lower. And then in terms of the average use, I mean, it's maybe handy. I think I broke it down to 749, a thousand gallon usage, something in there. But but when we look at average usage, I looked at my house, apparently my daughter's home. I'm at the 4,000 and I'm telling you what, it's 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 regular. It's like a water park in my house. So I'm using a lot and
Just washing your hair.
Just all the time, Dana.
Instant.
Dana near everybody, check his 11 o'clock show. The uh that was worth it. That was easy. Getting back to it, you know, most of our, I mean, I would comfortably say between 1,800 and 2,200 would be our in our average range of usage here. So you're probably looking at a realization of $14 on the water bill. I think that there's good news ahead that when you look at the combinations, not good news, but
Well.
we offset it. Our wastewater, on the other hand, does not necessarily need any adjustment at all, my rate. And that's coming from Baker Tilly. They they feel confident. They're telling us we've got 1.2, 1.4 to spend in that fund before we're even and still remain with our reserves. So we can offset some of that water bill that we're looking at through the fact that we're not wastewater. When you combine the two, we're looking at about $2 above state average, and that's for 4,000 gallon usage. So and and again, I want to remind you that when you combine the two, it's counting for 4,000 gallon worth of water usage, and I don't, I would suggest we're not going to get there for most people. So we're probably going to be below the state average when you combine the bills because our water usage is probably going to be low. And again, the other thing that was difficult with water usage as apart from sewer that we were thinking about is that so many of, we don't realize the income other communities do, so the comparison is really hard when you look at us and Argus or Freeman. They have year-round residency. We have a very lean period of income collection because we're collecting minimums on so many properties on that water usage. So we don't have the advantage. So when we look at the comparative
Should we also then consider upping that minimum?
Well, it's all built in.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
It's all, yeah, so um one of the things, one of them was, no, no, when Kevin was referring to to water usage on, I think, page two, two of that first thing that gave me with the chart on the front. Grabbed a bunch of just average uses of a wide variety of addresses and took out the names. So you can see with the current cost, you can see the average monthly water use. Then you can see the current monthly costs and if the rate increase is implemented, what that increase would be. And then I took it out for a year, so then you can see kind of what the the annual difference is going to be. And it's all the way from, you know, average monthly uses practically zero where that's probably just a house that's just not. I think there's maybe a couple of houses that people just don't are living in, so it's a minimum bill all the way up to
So
There's one for 7,000.
Yeah, that's kind of
So, yeah.
So if I on average sewer waters combined though, and a big chunk of our bills are sewer, so because I'm thinking about like my average sewer water bill, I think it's like $65 to $70.
Yeah, so this actually, this bill, the average monthly cost is sewer.
Okay, okay. So I would be
This chart, yeah.
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 Plus your $60 or $70 bill has fire protection.
Trash.
Trash. So it's
Right.
What, on this chart, first column, average monthly water use.
That's how many gallons of gallons of water you're using.
2,950.
That's just a random address she picked, just for example.
Oh, those are random addresses?
Those are random addresses she picked just to
Okay.
just to show you the difference.
Okay.
And I tried to grab, you know, people that you know, maybe here year-round, maybe aren't here year-round. Their property value levels.
One of the things in our conversation with Baker Tilly yesterday? River flows, anyway, Tuesday maybe. Anyway, our conversation with them made us realize that there's several things realized, and we won't speak percentages, but this number that is being presented as the increase is actually the minimum suggested number that we have to increase. It would have been a lot higher with an increase if not for two things. Number one, the geo bond offset a lot of the improvements that were going to be wrapped back. Talked about that already. So we didn't have the meter project or the water plant project factor in. The other is that we, in this study that we asked Baker Tilly to do, we factored in the and the income from the dunes, although not realized yet, but as it online's in 26, 27, 28, is really going to offset. It would have been, and I will speak only
Also positively.
Possibly, yes, excuse me. Thank you, but I mean, yeah, but the the key to this is and I'll say percentages one time. We were told it was going to be in the 120 to 130% range increase. If we did not factor in geo bond and the dunes income over the next three years, with it in, it's 85%. So it knocked almost 35% increase off of what we would have had to do. We have not done this for 10 years, Karen. It's not increased for 10 years. The nice thing about this number is it's a Band-Aid ripoff. It's going to hurt a little bit at first, but this is it until 2029 according to Baker Tilly's projections. This this rate increase will be stable for three years. That's the way they presented it. The reason they do not suggest tapering it in is because the fund needs a shot in the arm. It needs the, it needs the jolt because of where we're at. Once we get that jolt, then we'll give time for the dunes income to start being realized and being inserted into the waterfront, and that's going to help offset any increase.
Do they get cash for the dunes? Yes.
They did.
Okay. Yeah, we gave them all that information.
The problem is where we're, our problem is the next one or two years. Once we get past 2027, 2026, I feel pretty confident so today that our fund's going to start becoming self-sustaining. And they even entertain the fact that we may in 2029 look at it and go, we only need a little increase. Or that's the time where we start a cost of living increase that's minimal every year. So this is, they really recommend this this number and they recommend it in a single increase was their recommendation to us.
Ask Justin a question. Like your average teacher, colleague, or if I were to look at this, I would immediately look, well, it looks like it's going to be about $1. From what I have right now, about, you know, 45%. What would that average teacher look at this and say, what do they, what do you think?
Well, having the conversation with my wife about that, pretty much that exact same thing. I mean, it's going to have a huge difference in on us, and we just got our tax assessment. Our tax value went up $95,000. And the you know, an extra 80 bucks a month is going to be, because I just looked at a show, Kevin, our one-month bill, we used 8,900 gallons this last month. Now, that's not our average. Kevin said he looked, that wasn't our average. Our average is in the fours.
48.
48, 49. So now we're looking at about, let's say, 50 bucks a month up top and as a teacher, obviously, we're not making, you know, money hand over fist. So that's not any any increase anyway. Cost of living increase is going to, it's going to affect us. I was sitting here racking my head going, what can, what can we do because we have, we're looking down the barrel of a gun that we're not going to have the money we need and this is going to I wish it wasn't right after our assessment came in mail. That just adds a little
Yeah, the timing is
I get it, yeah.
Well, traps aren't going to change this year as much as they will next year and the following year. Where you'll get, what, 300 bucks at the credit or?
That's, yeah.
That's, that's wonder.
Now, I'm worried that you talk about 2029, that's only four years away. So over the course of five years, our water rates are going to double. That that worries me too.
Well.
I can't make the big thing that Anna and I said were where our goal is for families to come here. Very difficult for families to come here. And I know this isn't necessarily something we can avoid, but it's just not going to work out the way we want it to if we have to keep doing things like this.
I think the fact that it wasn't incrementally raised over these last 11 years, we'd probably still be at this number. If we had done 3% to 5% a year for the last 11 years, it would, it's easier to bite off a small chunk than, oh, bam.
And that increase is just water. It's not, you know, not everything else.
The average in Indiana, it's not the cost that outrageous by comparison to other towns.
If you look at the last yeah, the last page on that is, I kind of want to, I also want you to look at the actual study a little bit too, because there's some just to explain some of the reasons why we're needing to, we're needing funds and why we're raising rates. But on that last page, I did an overall rate comparison. And these are Baker Tilly provided numbers. So you can see where, you know, if you combine the water and sewer together, we're high, we're at the top of the, you know, the the areas that that Baker Tilly provided for us. But we'd be $2 above what Argus is paying and we're $3.18, just under $3 over the state average at this time.
Yeah, they didn't present any there increases.
Right, and that's the other thing. It's a moving target because we've seen on the, excuse me, on the municipal list that, you know, people are putting out, well, what are you, what are you paying?
Right now, every town medic is shooting it out there.
Yeah, it was a big topic at the A and Roundtable up in Middlebury. I think of the 23 communities that presented like an update on their community. My colleague and I were sitting there like counting how many of them are getting ready to redo a water sewer plant. There's like 14 of them, and they were all freaked out. Ship Shawana is doing a $20 million project and they have to more than double the bill. And the business, the businesses pay a higher rate there and one of their planted officials was telling me that she's getting like death threats over it. Because businesses will go from where they were paying like $100 a month to some of them $400 and $500. Just just crazy.
And I got news. I'm telling you, when you look at Freeman, you think they're happy about being at the bottom, you're wrong. The lowest rate, because they are scrambling right now at a 20, that minimal $28 million wastewater project that they have no idea how to fund. And that number right there is, they they are not going to be able to be able to, they have to raise. And they are sweating because the amount they have to raise is going to be outrageous. And I'm not doing this comparison game. I'm just saying, we we might be ahead of the curve on this because I think a lot of other communities are going to be having this conversation for what I'm hearing in the background, to your point.
So in terms of the study though, when they were accounting for future projects, the fact that we're already below where we should be for the bond payment, et cetera. Are there things in that, so I think about this sort of like a mortgage, like if I could buy down a point on the interest rate by putting down another 50,000 on the down payment, right? Is there, and maybe this is a really stupid and naive question to me after all the years of being a council, but I don't know the answer to it. But is there a way to quote buy down that 103, right, like that average bill? So I know like utility funds are kept separately, right? You have sewer, you have water, you you can't borrow from one without paying it back, right? But can you put money from general into that fund, that water fund? Or can you, so that you're going, okay, we have some rainy day funds and we have some general funds. We're going to move some into water to stabilize it, whatever we want to call it. Kind of like you did with your mortgage where you're going to buy a point down on the interest rate by stabilizing that down payment, right?
You're doing it.
We lowered that 103 by say 10 bucks.
Not out of the general. I I would, I would hesitate with that. There is a couple of things. We offset some Baker Tilly pushed back a couple of capital improvement projects and things to push down that number. My my immediate knee-jerk reaction, everybody can correct it if you want, but the only real viable solution to that right now, the contribution that gives us a jolt in the arm is from the redevelopment commission of $30,000. If they were to up that to $100,000, now you're looking at relieving some of the general replacement allowance that was budgeted in. So now you're starting to talk, I mean, that would be like buying points. If redevelopment was able to up their commitment yearly over the next three years to keep that fund energized for the for the reserve fund, then yes, you might be able to enter, and Karen, correct me if I'm wrong. But that would be the fastest way to to offset it, and that's something that
You're kind of doing that now, but you're trash. Because you haven't raised those things forever. We're actually
Yeah, the administrative fee is no longer covering the cost.
So you're actually going black into trash.
Well, and we also, in doing that geo bonds, we kind of did what you're, we we bought it down.
Right.
Because that geo bond took off.
Yeah, that's a good point here.
Yeah.
Years.
Yeah.
What was the numbers you said, 130 to 85?
Yeah.
But it's already
So if we, if we did do that with redevelopment, if if they were open to doing that, are we talking that we'd be more like a $90 average bill? What, how much would it impact it really? Do we know at all?
You can ask that question, so and then, you know, that's a whole other step that we have to go.
But by bringing it up to this particular level, we would know the monthly income, right? So redevelopment, you know, what is redevelopment's not paying on the geo bond, so that would be the other option, right? That?
What do you mean redevelopment?
They're not contributing.
They've backed certain bonds, right? That's what I'm saying. We've had bonds in the past that they paid.
Right, they did the sewer.
Yeah.
Right.
So that's the other thing I'm thinking about, like would it
It'd have to be a substantial commitment from them.
Well, currently it's a $30,000 commitment. I don't know how long, yeah.
For 30, the the length of bond.
That's right. That's that's the one model they are hoping. But in order to offset expenses, this is the only place that you'd be able to do that for redevelopment, which is an easy that's not an issue because that's what tip is for, is infrastructure to offset. But at the same time, right, that's
Sure, whatever.
we haven't had.
Yeah, what are their priorities?
That's it.
Yeah, I can always be to, you know, save the down tightening budget.
And I hope, and I hope this is not salesman tactics. It has been 10 years of no rate increase.
I agree.
And we're stabilizing rates with one rate, with one raise of the rate. We are now stabilizing you for four years. That is a commitment, and Karen, correct me if I'm wrong. It felt very confident until 2029. Baker Tilly is not suggesting, the model is based on one, 85% increase stabilized over four years to 2029. Just his point, it is hard. But at least this is going to be a fixed budget for him and his family for the next four years. And little consolation in the first few months, right, as you adjust, but this isn't going to be a constant, oh, here's another 3%. Here's another, you know. I I think there's some strength to that tact, not tactic, excuse me, but approach. But I also recognize some of the drawbacks from the family.
I have a question here. But it's in front of me and I'm looking at the third paragraph. The minimum balance required by our bond owners is 520,000. Our balance at the end of March was 498. Okay, thanks to a $30,000. Okay, so somebody said, well, redevelopment commission put in 100. But it looks like it may like if you is this 528, 521, something that is constant?
No. I mean, that was, the 528 is what we're supposed to have for our bond ordinance.
Right.
So
What we actually, we actually have 498.
Right now, we have 498, 749. And if you look at the, and it'll, it'll continue to go down the rest of the year, most likely, based on just the expenses that, the expenses that we have to run our water plants.
You did a lot of projects with our funds.
Yeah.
So that was a relief to some of these funds.
So one of the things that it would probably help to look at, and I'm I'm not answering, I'm not trying to avoid your question.
No, that's fine.
But um, you know, we have just general operating expenses, you know, day-to-day, keep it running. But then we also have some capital improvement projects that we need to do. What, you know, half, half of the geo bond is going to do some major projects, but we also have some other ones that are kind of just sitting there simmering. So if you go to page eight in the in the Baker Tilly study on the water. Yeah, oh, I'm sorry.
Page six.
Page six. It's eight on my computer. Sometimes I'm trying to save money and not
It's not the meter page?
No, it's utility capital improvement plan.
Did you, oh. So if you look at that, these are some projects coming up that oh, this is the sewer. It's a different one. You have a water one and a sewer. No, you're good. I've got it on my computer. One, one for each utility, yep. And Bob can address more of these, but you can see kind of we've listed out projects that need to be done over the next, the course of this year and the next four years up through 2029. And so we can kind of budget stuff out.
That also do note that the number two is what the bond is relieving off of that utility capital improvement plan. And three is the ARCA funds that Bob is referring to on the well. But those have been already offset expense-wise.
And then the water line meter, we pushed that out. Actually, they're assuming that it's going to be funded outside of the utility. So pushing that out, but the one thing I just want to call attention to is the oh, the lead line replacement. And that's something that we have run a little bit earlier, and we need to budget money for that because we have to have to replace 10% of our lead service connections each year, and we have 180 of them.
One, so yeah, call it one.
So basically, we're replacing
That's something we can
We can't kick down the road and we can't avoid.
I was told 10% per year. Before it
Feeling like it's done sooner.
And we don't have a lead problem. I mean, we test for it every year. We don't have lead.
Got that many. Well, it kind of surprises me that there actually are that many.
Anything that has galvanized behind lead, we have lead gooslings. The older parts of town have lead gooslings, so it's got galvanized after that. So you have to consider that whole run in lead circle. So it's not lead, it's galvanized. It has lead touching it, so it has to be considered.
Accurate. How was that full leak circuit?
Yeah.
That circuit that went out, that got people.
I mean, there's some things that were best guess scenario. I could probably read some of them off, but definitely a budget. Budget number.
Well, it's never fun to raise rates unless you have a tree park that everyone wants to take down and you don't have the best time. Last time.
That sounds like some kind of, that sounds like a beginning of a proverb, Teddy.
That's when we raised rates, there are people thinking, thinking about that tree in the park.
It's not on the radar.
No one noticed this whole rate increase because they had waited eight years that time around, right, Karen?
Boy, you had to
So
That's
They don't start about the tree and about the rate.
I should have waited till we raised the rates and then go out and cut some trees down because they'll forget about the rates. They'll come after you for trees.
Maybe they'll get upset about the trees and get about the rates.
There you go. Bag the dog.
Well, I mean, it is unfortunate that we didn't do a regular incremental increase, so it is very fine. Because if you're done, $3 a year even, we'd be, there would have been $30
Sure.
pulled in and over that period of time, we'd be at this state.
Plus, you guys were there in 2020. You mentioned it and I recorded it in my brain cells. You said you were trying to do it during COVID. You thought about it and then you couldn't, you can't pull the trigger during that.
Yeah, we just
You guys had your reasons, right? It's not, or what the council had during this back then. It is what it is. Hindsight's 2020 and we just need to understand how we're going to honestly. It's not an easy decision.
Sure.
As the reason, the reason we couldn't do this in increments is. The last paragraph or two sentences because of the state revolving fund program.
No, we can't do it in increments because we're not going to catch up. Basically, I mean, we're just our. The increase in funds isn't going to stay in line with. With what we need to keep um above that that rate and then actually put put money aside for future capital projects.
Well, I, you know, thinking about the whole move money from the general fund over to the water fund is a little uncomfortable given what's going on with us. We want, we don't know. That our revenues aren't going to drop significantly. And that'll impact every aspect of what we do, right? So that that would be a bit of a risk. Where redevelopment would be less of a risk. But still, even if redevelopment raised up the amount that they're putting toward. Infrastructure utility bond. You still have to raise rates, even if.
The rates still have to raise.
Is there a hardship? For homeowners to for relief, for relief?
That's something we could look at, but the problem is income qualifications.
Yeah.
You know that. I I I get it. I mean, you're looking for a ray of sunshine to come through the dark.
I H C D A had that for a while because I remember we sent some of them for.
They are right now.
New housing development people to that program, but it was a COVID programs specifically, so I don't participate.
I think we come back to the idea that what is this really? I mean, we keep using the number four thousand and I get that. That's where the state's averages are set. But our average homeowner is not going to recognize these type of expenses. Why? Because if they were, we'd already have the income coming in. We have so much temporary residency. That it does not impact them as hard as what it will. So when we talk about the end, the unfortunate part of this is. It's a data you pointed out, right? It's the family, the young family.
Ten people, they can. That guy.
Again, once again, I'll have to. Cringe every time my daughter's home thinking about.
Incremental rates even over three years.
We just wouldn't catch up.
We just don't catch up.
Did they already pay a minimum per household and that get credit against their their usage? So you could hit those temporary households.
Their minimum takes care of the dead service.
Yeah, that's what I'm wondering if that minimum.
Be raised.
Just increase.
If it's it's thirty five now, right?
Well, that minimum's going to automatically increase.
Because two thousand, well, the minimum is two.
It's two thousand gallons.
And it's based on two thousand gallons.
So it's automatically going.
Up to two thousand gallons of usage, you're going to pay that minimum amount.
I said the average is four thousand, so.
Yeah, why?
Three thousand.
I was gonna say, why don't we bump that minimum? I like that idea because then. You're going to collect from those temp houses, maybe it's another ten dollars a month. Right.
No.
There's, there's.
But does that if if our majority of the users in this town are under that three thousand dollar mark, is it punitive? Is it punitive to them? Because now you're bumping that minimum usage up to them now. Or does it just?
What, right? If you're increasing.
I understood, but it's going to go up more if I if I'm using.
He's being conservative.
If I'm using, if I'm a thirteen hundred gallon user.
A single woman or.
That's going to hurt. That's going to hurt fixed incomes more than anything. Yes.
If they stay under a certain amount of throughput.
Right.
They can get out of that. Of course, there's a lot of basket.
But one of the our county, one of the arguments, one of the arguments we get hit with, not arguments, valid point. When it comes to raising the rates is our fixed income residency. And that would unfortunately, I think penalize them.
I think they're going to get penalized.
I I agree, everybody's. I mean, it's just how hard the rules are, right?
But what's that person going to pay though with this rate increase? Probably they'll probably hit the minimum before they hit the amount the rate increase was meant for.
So you're looking at there at minimum, there's going to be about fifteen dollar increase to everybody's bill. Because you're looking at forty, seven forty something, I think is what I calculated. Yeah.
If you add it a thousand to the two thousand, you're getting another seven forty five per household.
Right? At two thousand gallon minimum, you're looking at everybody's bills going up to be a, all right, so fourteen ninety. Minimum increase.
Well, that's a lot better talking about that than.
Your damn skin.
About a forty dollar bill.
That's it. And that's why that four thousand gallon mark that the state uses for the average minimum, you know, the average house. Is a little bit problematic at times because when you start looking into the our software, utility software, you're not looking at that as an average. You're looking at much more like a two thousand gallon usage because our minimums sit there. A lot of people don't make that minimum.
But is that because we have so many temporary residents?
Yes, and we have, we have a lot of, we have a lot of older single residents in our profile. We have temporary residents who are in and out of their households. You have very few. I mean, you are, you are an anomaly. To a certain extent where you've got four children, family, young in town because of the housing prices again. Yeah.
It's in the days.
Yeah. So it's it, you're not. It's not an accurate depiction of what's really our our residencies are going to experience in their bills because a lot of them aren't hitting that four thousand bar. Yeah, they're really probably going to see a fifteen dollar increase to their water bill, nothing on their sewer. So really that, you know, you're looking at fifty, that and they're not going to say hooray and come bring us roses and chocolates for it, but. It's also not going to, I don't.
So that person and our temporary people are going to see at least a fifteen dollar increase.
That's correct. That those those users below two thousand, everybody's going to see a fifty dollar increase because that's our minimum, right?
I think it'd be interesting if. This water software, I'd be interested above our customer base. I'd like to know how many people as a percent of that customer base are on the minimum.
I'm not that good with it.
Yeah.
I went shopping through it just to get some, just some sampling. But it it's something that we could possibly.
Yes, your average, I'm thinking of trying to, you know. Program, but if I'm looking here, our January was at six thousand. Our March, when we were in the hospital, was at a thousand. And then our April is at nine thousand.
And if you take a look historically, it's forty eight hundred.
Historically, it's forty eight to five, yeah, yeah.
That's your. Yeah, that's your. Forty kids. Forty kids, just at the regular shower.
You weren't the head prince.
Well, he'd go over to school.
Hey, we got a leg, people.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Weird.
Yeah, it is uh.
I had.
So you're going to see eighty.
Oh, yeah. This month I would have seen an eighty dollar increase. Here, but another question that I had, so. We have a four up top, we say in the second paragraph, forty dollars a month. And then down here, we say the increase is seven forty five per thousand gallons. So that's only twenty eight bucks, only nine bucks. If we. So are we actually at thirty?
Well, if you take a look at the actual increase and divide it by four, correct? Because you're looking at gallons, so I'm trying to get a thousand gallon rate, which is a little bit more accurate. It allows you to break it down a little better. When you look at the rate of increase that Baker Tilly was suggesting, which were thirty, excuse me, what was that it was? Forty?
Forty. Four thousand.
Yeah. So what I did was divide that, I think, I thought.
So if you look at page nine.
Thank you.
When you're figuring out the water bill. And you got the normal connection. So your first two thousand. It's got the metered rates per month for one thousand gallons at the top, and then below it says minimum charge per month. And that minimum charge per month. Right hand column all the way to the left hand column, the sixteen sixty four is what you're currently paying for two thousand gallons of water. Then you go over the proposed, it would increase that minimum per two thousand gallons, it's thirty dollars. So then what you do. Is go up. Um, because that includes the water and then it also includes the the monument. So then up above, as you're figuring up a water bill. Those your, if you have a three thou, if you've got, if we're using three thousand gallons, your first two thousand gallons are thirty dollars and seven eight cents. Then your next thousand gallons would be um.
Thirteen.
Well, not really. It'd be half of fifteen or half of, it'd be thirteen nineteen divided by. Yeah, it'd be thirteen nineteen, right? I'm sorry, because that's per one thousand gallons. Yeah.
The more you use, the less it increases.
Exactly.
Right, when I was looking at, I was looking at what I gave the seven forty five number on a thousand. We're going up to four thousand. So at a four thousand dollar rate, where we were was thirty five fifteen, where we're going to be at sixty five oh three with. Well, that's twenty nine eighty five. So I took that for a test drive and said, okay, minimally, you're going to have a two thousand, the bill was thirty. Something and every thousand over that is now going to be at that rate. That's going to increase at a seven forty. That's why I broke it down into a thousand now, because it's. That's going to accurately depict exactly how much your bill is going to be paid because up to two thousand gallons, we got a flat, basically. You got your minimum charge. Then you start adding for a thousand gallon usage. So what'd you say the cutoff on the rate was after how much? How many gallons?
So the first two thousand and then it goes up.
To.
The next four thousand gallons, right?
That's right. So that's all the way up to six thousand gallons, you're being charged at a seven forty five per. Thousand gallon rate. If you really want to be clever, break that down into pennies and send it out to the public. Look, we're just raising it only point oh seven.
It is interesting to have this conversation because our sewer water bill in Indianapolis. Is over a hundred dollars for a small two bedroom condo where only grand lives.
And what's on that bill? Is that the other thing? Like, if you look at our.
Doesn't have trash service in that, because that comes through this HOA. It's just sewer water.
I think.
And it's always over a hundred dollars.
And these. Outside of observations, it's rates.
You know, the the one thing that back in the forties or whenever they put in the water sewer and storm. You know. At least they had the good thought to. Not run storm water together, sewer together.
So thank you.
In a lot of cities.
Yes, so combined storm.
South Bend, I think, was one that got slammed because. Their their sewer and their storm. And at least we didn't have to do that, you know, our extra water in the sewers.
Do we need to address the trash bill while we're doing this? And even if it's just a dollar or two? Because Bob's right, the last rate. It went up a little and we didn't raise it here.
I don't think those rates have changed since you started.
No, it hasn't changed since they started. We've been really lucky.
By the way, but there was that one dollar admin fee. And it caused that that rate increase, but we're probably really hovering close to the line there.
And I'm not talking about anything significant. Does this also raise our storm water rate? Okay, just wondering.
I saw where they had wire protections raised.
Excess part of the water.
Yeah.
So the trash button has to see that.
Do anything. I know.
Not right now.
That thought built up over the years. Yeah, I think it was all the way up to ninety thousand at one point, I was sitting on. So we have eaten that.
The thing too, I think. I mean, I go, it's always about comparison, right? I think people want to make that comparison and I think sometimes people love to use Argus. And Argus is great right now, but guess what? They did a small rate increase last time they did it. I was talking to people there. Mark, it's a good friend. I think they're probably due for another year, a year or two before they're having this conversation again. I just give that feeling.
They pay for a lot of their capital projects through their electric. They have an electric.
Yep.
They use that for.
That fund is being hit hard, so not to speak to them, but.
It's got to be think also that.
Where it could be way worse. We're showing, and the other thing too, it it because the comparison is always an effort, right? When you're looking at other communities or whatever. We're showing you a rate right now in twenty twenty five that's going to be the same rate that twenty twenty nine. Show me where these other communities and where everybody else is going to be at in twenty twenty nine. And I I know that's little consolation to twenty twenty five, but the luxury is we're not coming back to you, hitting you. For four more years and you had ten years off. Sorry, we got to do, you know, sorry, but. I just don't see that that conversation with Baker Tilly. Because they just, it set out some clear things for me. Number one. The scaffolded in, triculate, the rate is just not really what we need because of the reserve fund. The second thing is. That the income realized in for twenty twenty seven, twenty eight from the dunes is going to be instrumental in liberating us from this cycle. Of where we're going to have that additional income of those water units out there. That's going to actually, I think, offset the need to have another massive increase in the near future. And by near future, I'm talking ten, fifteen years. It doesn't mean we won't have an increase, but it can be a small cost of living rather than one that's going to hit them. Because of where we're at right now. So I think we're going to have greater flexibility. And they said, do not put this out in public, so I'll just say it in this room. Baker Tilly said, you may even be at a point where you can entertain adjusting the rate down. That that would be on. Strange, but not that we're overdoing it now. They're just saying, you don't know what that dunes income is going to look like. They're using a conservative estimate based upon minimums.
But if you bring the the other side of this, you bring the dunes online. Your expenses are going to increase.
Oh, yeah, you're going to pay for more chemicals, not necessarily.
More electric, more electric, more chemicals.
But that's, I think you're offsetting, I think.
Salaries, all that, the hard costs is already going to, that's going to stay.
Yeah.
So you'll have a little more for the electric and chemicals.
But very, but not enough to offset the income though, I don't think, coming off of that.
More beneficial than.
Well, he figured it four thousand being the average and. You know, not all of their units they're renting in ounces are. It'd come up to four thousand. They'll probably be at the closer to.
I think when they generated the income off of that, we did it up. Not sure, but they, I think, because they didn't, I don't think they used four thousand gallons for the income, I think. But I can't be sure of that.
I thought I saw that in.
Yeah, maybe they did, maybe they didn't. I can't remember, but there will be income that will offset and that's coming from them.
Um, so if we end up, you know, at the end of. Twenty six or twenty seven. With major surpluses, you can always credit each residence. I know there are conservancy districts that do that. They'll give them like the month of December. They don't charge them. Is that possible? We have to do that. I mean, if we ended up in that that ideal scenario, which I'm not that optimistic.
No, because. My first one. Yeah, sorry, not somebody.
Yeah.
Come to see you. But there there are realities, right? And I mean, I think playing for the worst, hope for the best is always the right thing. So if we get to that point.
If the average bill is a hundred and three dollars for sewer, water and trash, is that?
Based upon state, yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's not bad for covering all three of those utilities.
Seven hundred and three is not, it's.
It's.
Water, sewer, yeah.
It's not including trash.
Not the extra.
But you're looking at two dollars more than the state. Two dollars for the state. And I think that's the key. Where where's our state average? Where are we at? Two dollars more, so it's a change. But the key, I, the the thing is, this is not spur, this is just not random, right? We're we're getting noticed. We're, we're getting notices about our reserve fund, we're re, we're, we're having to act on this. It's, it's not something that we can just.
Do it next year.
That's what we've been doing for.
Thing is, next year has arrived.
Next year.
Communities are, are being restricted to far worse situations, they haven't updated their sewer and water for sixty years. That is an ugly, ugly situation. And then on top of it, if you haven't raised rates and you suddenly have a twenty two dollar property.
That's it.
Then you haven't touched the rates all this time.
The reality of it too is people are gonna understand this and they're not. There's no, there is no narrative to be made, because people are gonna understand this the way they wanna understand it. They'll be the people who's talking about their fears. It'll be the people who talks about this and that. At the end of the day. At the end of the day, the numbers don't lie. And we had a third party generate these numbers for us. One of the best in the cut, I mean, Baker Tilly, if you wanna question their credibility, go ahead, but you're gonna be in a minority. They generated these numbers based upon real, real data. The data indicates this is the course of action. I, I guess that's where we, that's where I arrive at. I understand it's not gonna be a popular decision, I understand it's. Not gonna be one that's gonna, you know, have people singing praises, but it's one that I think is responsible.
Someone might need, we should never speak for you again.
You're welcome, fella.
So we can't flip to a more positive aspect of this conference too, and that is the sewer. Which is, is sitting very nice, has a nice surplus in it. The bonds paid off, that was done in twenty twenty one. We continue at the same rate, same rate, so we're collecting what we would have paid in that bond payment. So we've been able to build up a surplus. Bob has some big projects that we've kind of put off until we got that bond paid off. So that we had the, the funds to do without having to take out anything. So we don't have to do anything with the sewer. We've got some room to, to get these projects done and be able to pay cash and not have to worry about interest and mortgages.
He sure gave the shot in the arm, too.
Oh, yeah, we got Etor and Southwest Conservancy too. Right, well, they're, yeah, that was huge, but that's another thing, the sewer also has that advantage of, you know, we have. Free customers that aren't using our water, but they are, we are treating their sewage. So there's a little bit more volume on the sewer end than their.
That with the, the Midwestern studies coming back on the wastewater plant, you'll be hearing about it from me tonight on the night in letter that. Last for permission assigned, but there are things out at the, at the wastewater plant that we. Our capacity is still good, we're online, people, it's not really that, it's, it's really just an issue of maintenance and being able to. On a quality level, item is, is coming. When they start using phrases like last inspection, well, they're not last inspection and it's time, and so.
That's because we've used that, it's coming, it's coming.
It's coming.
And it's over.
And so, but yeah, it, it's, it's, it is now time. So speaking with Bob, hearing back from Midwestern, we're looking downline at the end of twenty twenty five, twenty six to start the project. The money's there and the plan will be there and what we'll do is we'll triage the plan, prioritize the need. And scaffold them in over time, so we don't necessarily drain the fund. Down to its minimum reserve, but we'll hit it and keep it, and that way it can keep feeding itself without having to have a rate increase. So we'll bring the projects online in a way that we don't deplete the fund to the point where we are now scrambling to try to understand that. At the income rates that Karen's talking about, I think we're pretty safe, but that's a conversation we're hoping to have next week. As, as Mark can affect with the, uh, Midwestern plan.
Yes, tomorrow.
Yeah, it was tomorrow, Bob.
I do think we should still, at the very least, approach CRC. To discuss what might be possible. And account for what. You know, take a really good look, because the revenue that we were projecting there is far higher than what we projected it. So when we were doing our finance plan last year and looking at where are gonna be some of the things we wanna invest in. On CRC, we were expecting much lower revenue than we ended up with. So there might be some space there. You know, and, and I know we're going into budget season, we may need some of that space for emergency services or whatever. Uh, just, you know, and I know we're all conservative at S B one and how that's gonna impact on our revenues as well. But I think it's worth a discussion with CRC, because also the dunes will start producing revenue for, for the CRC to. Beyond what's owed on the infrastructure. Bill that we're paying on that.
Looking at twenty twenty seven, well, twenty twenty six is our minimum. Of coming in, I can't remember what Baker Tilly's number showed, but twenty twenty seven, twenty, by twenty twenty nine, you've got a nice. Extreme coming up there and the executive story.
I mean, the current tip is in much better shape than we thought it would be in revenue. We were predicting much lower. So it wouldn't be unreasonable to move that thirty thousand up to higher commitment.
And, and that's fine, I just don't wanna get stuck in. What are our next steps? I wanna keep this process moving.
Absolutely.
Let's get to advertise at some point, we were the rate increase that we decided it's gonna be. And maybe that's the next step, have some sort of conversation with CRC. Because if we're not gonna look at the general fund to cover some of this capital cost, just fine. You know, if that's the only other. Potential option that would offset it. We can at least have a conversation and then come back to the next council meeting and decide what we're gonna advertise for.
My question is, how much does it really offset?
That's what I was saying, it'd be pretty substantial.
It would have to be, that, that, I mean, I, I don't know that answer.
There's gotta be a formula Baker Tilly to go, okay, if they increase it fifty thousand a year, it'll lower the average household bill. Three bucks or whatever, I don't know what that is.
Not sure, yeah. And I was thinking more along the lines of just relieving the rent for their fund right now. Cause it's running deficit, right? A, a bit. So, yeah, I don't, I don't know.
I don't even know how many years are left on that thirty year commitment from CRC.
I think it goes to thirty four.
That's what he.
It was a thirty year, started in twenty fourteen. And those two. Allocation, so it's all two.
Seven will be off of there.
Well, do we go with a joint meeting with the CRC?
I don't say. CRC can discuss. See what they.
Okay, yeah. Yeah, I was just giving possibilities.
And it does take a bit of a look, because you're right, it's just inspired. So you have to look at how long can that commitment be for?
That prioritization, right? If it's just gonna be. There's gonna be a grain of, there's gonna be a grain on, on a beach. And is it worth? Right?
Maybe it's just a look at the capital projects too, CRC's covered a lot of utility and search capital projects.
And that's always comforting to know that you have that, I wouldn't call it reserve fund, but you can knock on the door of, of the CRC and say. We need help on this or, and, and that's something that. You don't wanna remove that capability by committing. And right now, a lot of people are knocking. So. But it is all.
Some point I'll probably have the eighteen fifteen nine.
No, that was it.
Okay.